Rensselaar Planning Board Meeting for Thursday, July 17. The agenda for tonight's meeting is approval of the July 3, 2025 meeting minutes. American Tower Special Use Permit for Frog Pond Road. The Lenuzi subdivision, follow up on the driveway installation. Administrative item. Continuing discussion of small scale solar array setbacks and adjournment. I will now call the meeting to order. So for the meeting minutes, I will accept a motion to approve the meeting minutes from July, from the July 3 meeting. Bush by Dominic, second by Carol, all in favor. And I abstain.
Oh, actually, I abstain.
I abstain too.
Okay, so.
Second.
Okay. So do we have enough?
As long as we have four or yes.
We have four, yes, okay. So Carol, Laura, and Anna all abstain. So motion carried. All right, our first agenda topic is the American Tower Frog Pond Road Special Use Permit. Hi.
My name is Ariane Eastman, I am the agent for American Tower and here on behalf of Zenity Mobile. This is our second project in the town. 78 Pond Hill Road, we're looking to do a microwave addition, which is installing on the tower, one microwave dish, two OUDs, which is an outdoor unit, and two 2.28 inch control cables and two 0.21 inch fiber cables. All groundwork, no groundwork on this one and all remaining antennas, radios, and cables on the tower currently will stay the same.
I can pass this around, there's only one copy, so.
Sure.
Folks want to take a look at it while we kind of go through the special use permit. So it's just upgrades to the tower, essentially.
Adding a microwave.
And, yep.
What it needs to run.
So everything's there. I was looking through your application, it looks like there is a outstanding balance of $350.
I've been working with Tim tonight because we weren't sure if that's the correct amount.
Okay.
Because the fees that we originally had and what he has changed.
Okay.
So we're gonna, I'm gonna get with him right after this and get that.
Okay.
Both the stone prop and for this one, because we paid 400 on each so far.
Okay.
We just want to confirm that's the right amount.
So you said rectify full?
Yep.
Okay.
Yep.
Not a problem. So for this, they've provided the building permit application with which we have the special use permit. And we do have some here for some of the fees, copy of the deed, letter of authorization from American Tower, a completed EFR certification checklist, completed leave and seeker form, assigned and sealed construction drawings, and structural analysis, and also certificates of insurance. So before we get started looking at this, I just wanted to ask if anybody has any questions? And I know the side hasn't looked up the mappings yet, but any questions kind of on the scope of the work?
No.
All right. Well. I think it's okay that we still review considering the.
Right, and just for everyone's benefit, that seems federal statute that says this request shall be approved applies, but we still get to review the application for efficiency and make sure there's no huge changes, but again, federal law here is controlling, so we do have limited review abilities.
Grab paperwork. All right, so I know that I only have the copy, so I'll just read through it. Our first part of the meeting will be to review the special use permit application. So the name of the applicant is American Tower Corporation, they've provided their address. It's at 10 Presidential Way, Woburn, Massachusetts. They provide the applicant's attorney and agent in here. And so. And also the property owner. So the physical address of the property is 780 Pond Hill Road, Rensselaarville. They have, we've asked if the, identified the zoning district in which the property is located, so we will just need that answered, which we can just make a update for. And the roads and streets and routes ordering the proposed project are Pond Hill Road, and again, it's listed on Frog Pond Road. So there are no description of any new streets within the project. The next question is, does the subject fall within 500 feet of municipal boundary, county highway, state highway, or county or state park or recreation area pursuant to general municipal law 239? No. Identify property features such as land cover, wetlands, slopes, waterways, none have been have been identified. Any other restrictions? None. The purpose of the project, they selected other, as the representative said, the addition of the microwave dish to T-Mobile's current installation of the tower. The description of the project is exactly that. And in terms of requirements, they, we request an area map and high resolution aerial photograph, which we have the site. The site map, which was provided. Again, we also request the $150 special use permit application fee, which is here, but there may be other fees because it is the cell phone tower. A visit consent form, and this is all signed 24th of June. Any questions on the special use permit application? I can pass that around if folks want to take a look at it as well. And we can update the zoning district after this meeting.
Yeah, if it's not, I don't have to.
Yeah, Tim will know it. Okay, so our next part of the meeting is reviewing the seeker form, the short environmental assessment, part one, so after we go through it, I'll pass it around as well. So as we said, it's 780 Pond Hill Road. One thing said Frog Pond.
It may be a typo.
Okay.
We have it as Pond Hill Road as well.
Okay. We'll just have to.
I can always.
No, you're fine. I was gonna say, I'm not aware of that road, but we will make that update. So the description of the proposed action is T-Mobile USA Incorporated proposes to modify an existing call communication facility, specifically T-Mobile USA, proposes to install microwave dish and two ODUs at the center line height 173 feet on existing lattice tower. No new ground disturbance is proposed. In terms of government approvals, there are none that have been identified, is that accurate? Terms of coastal resources, the project is. This one's just different than ours, are we able to accept one that's different than ours?
I did. Tim, last time I was here, that was yours.
This is just the long form.
Okay, so we can still go through this one?
Yeah, that's still the state provided form. Lot of information in there.
I might have brought my water bottle for this one. Okay, for coastal resources, is the project site within a coastal area waterfront or designated in Lynn Waterway? No. Is the project site located in a community with approved local waterfront revitalization program? No. Is the project within a coastal erosion hazard area? No. Part C, planning zoning. Will administrative or legal adopt the amendment of a plan, local ordinance, rule, or regulation be the only approvals which must be granted to enable the proposed action to proceed? No. C2, adopted land use plans to any municipality, adopted city, town, village, or county comprehensive land use plans include the site where the proposed action would be located? No. Next, is the site of the proposed action within any local or regional special planning district? Or designated state or federal heritage area watershed management plan? Yes. They've identified the New York State Heritage Areas of Mohawk Valley Heritage Corridor. Is the proposed action located wholly or partially within an area listed in the adopted municipal open space plan or adopted municipal farmland protection plan? No. Is the site of the proposed action located in a municipality with an adopted zoning law and ordinance? Yes. The zoning classifications here are RC3, so I can add that actually to here, and then I'll just have you initial that after. Okay. Is the, is the use permitted or allowed by special or conditional use permit? Yes. Is the zoning change requested as part of the proposed action? No. Section C4, existing community services, in what school district is the project located? Middleburg Central School District. What please or other public protection forces serve this project site? Albany County Sheriff. Which fire protection and emergency medical services serve the project site? Rensselaarville Fire District. What parks serve the project site? A promise to GIA 1915 feet southeast, Rensselaarville State Forest. Project details, section D. What is the general nature of the proposed action? Telecommunications. Is the proposed action expansion of existing project use? No. Is the proposed action a subdivision or include a subdivision? No. Will the proposed action be constructed in multiple phases? No. And the duration is approximately three months. If yes, does the project include new residential uses? No. Does the proposed action include non-residential construction? No. Does the proposed action include construction or other activities that will result in the impairment of any liquids such as creation of water supply reservoir upon lake waste lagoon or other storage? No. Section D2, project operations, does the proposed action include any excavation, mining, dredging during construction? Operations or both? No. Would the proposed action cause or result in alteration of increase or decrease in size of encroachment into any existing wetland, water body, shoreline, beach, or adjacent area? No. Will the proposed action user create a new demand for water? No. Will the proposed action generate liquid waste? No. Will the proposed action disturb more than one acre and create stormwater runoff either from a new point sources or non-point source during construction or post-construction? No. Does the proposed action include or will it include use of onsite one or more sources of air emissions, including fuel combustion, waste incineration, or other processes or operations? Yes. They identified that mobile sources during the project operations will be temporary construction vehicles. Will any air emission sources named in D.2F above require New York State Air Registration, Air Facility Permit, or Federal Clean Air Act? No. Will the proposed act? Methane? No. Will the proposed action result in release of air pollutants from open air operations or processes such as quarry or landfill operations? No. Will the proposed action result in substantial increase in traffic above present levels or generate substantial new demand for transportation facilities or services? No. Will the proposed action generate newer additional demand for energy? No. The hours of operation for construction will be Monday through Friday, normal business hours. And the operations of the facility are 24/7, but it's unmanned because it is a cell phone tower. Will the proposed action produce noise that will exceed existing ambient noise levels during construction? No. Will the proposed action have outdoor lighting? No. Does the proposed action have the potential to produce odors for more than one hour per day? No. Will the proposed action include any bulk storage petroleum or chemicals, 185 gallons and above ground storage, or any amount of underground storage? No. Will the proposed action use pesticides during construction? No. Will the proposed action involve or require management of disposal of solid waste or hazardous materials? No. Does the proposed action include construction or modification of solid waste management facility? No. Will the proposed action at the site involve the commercial generation treatment, storage, or disposal of hazardous waste? No. In terms of the site setting and proposed action in section E, they have selected existing land uses that the project site is on as rural, non-farm, forest, and other, and they've selected telecommunications facility. They've also provided that the project site consists of existing telecommunications facility, the areas around the project site consist primarily of undeveloped wooded land. In terms of land usage of the project site, the current acreage is less than one acre, the acreage after project completion will be the same and there is no change. Is the project site presently used by members of the community for public recreation? No. Are there any facilities serving children, the elderly, or people with disabilities? No. Does the project site contain an existing dam? No. Has the project site ever been used as a municipal, commercial, or industrial waste management facility? Or does the project site adjoining a property which is now one or was at one time? No. Have hazardous wastes been generated, treated, or disposed of at the project site? Or does the project site adjoining property which is now or was at one time commercially treat, store, or dispose of, used to treat, store, dispose of hazardous waste? No. In terms of potential contamination history, has there been a reported spill to the proposed project site or any other remedial actions taken to conduct take, have been conducted at or adjacent to the proposed site? No. Is the project within 2,000 feet of any site of a New York State D E C environmental site remediation database? No. In terms of section E.2, natural resources on or near the project site, are there bedrock outcroppings on the project site? No. And the average depth of bedrock at the project site is greater than six feet. Predominant soil types are Wellsboro silt loam, 3% to 8% slopes. The average depth of the water table at this project site is greater than six feet. Drainage status of the project site soils, it's moderately well-drained. Approximate proportion of proposed action site with slopes is 0% to 10%. Are there any unique geological features at the project site? No. Terms of soft surface water features, does any portion of the project site contain wetlands or other water bodies? No. Do any wetlands or other water bodies join the project site? No. Are there any wetlands or water bodies within or adjoining the project site regulated by any federal state local agency? No. Are any of the above water bodies listed in the most recent compilation of New York State Water Quality Imperator water bodies? Also no. Is the project site in a designated floodway? No. Is the project site in the 100-year flood plain? No. Is the project site in the 500-year flood plain? No. Is the project site located over or immediately adjoining a primary principal or solar source aquifer? No. Almost there. All right, identify the predominant wildlife species that occupy the project site. The project site was previously cleared as such, no suitable, it is not a suitable habitat. At the present, and developed land is improved, and the proposed installation of an existing telecommunications facility is anticipated to have no effect on the listed wildlife species. Sorry, it's cut off, so I butchered that. Does the project site contain a designated significant natural community? No. Does the project site contain any species of plant or animals listed on the federal government of New York State endangered or threatened animals, and does it contain any areas identified as a habitat for endangered certain species? No. Does the project site contain any species of plant or animal listed by New York State as rare, or as a species of special concern? No. Is the project site or adjoining area currently used for hunting, trapping, fishing, or shell fishing? No. Is the project site or any portion of it located in a designated agricultural district certified pursuant to the agricultural and markets law, Article 25, AA, Section 333? No. Are agricultural lands consisting of highly productive soils present? No. Does the project site contain all or part of it? All or part of, or substantially contiguous to registered natural landmark? No. Is the project site located, or does it adjoining to a state listed critical environmental area? No. Does the project site contain, or is it substantially contiguous to a building, archaeological site, or district which is listed on the National or State Historic Register of Historic Places? No. Is the project site or any portion of it located in or adjacent to an area designated sensitive for archaeological sites or the New York State Historic Preservation Office, SHPO? No. Have any additional archaeological or historic sites or resources been identified? No. Is the project site within five miles of any officially designated publicly accessible federal, state, or local scenic aesthetic resources? Yes. And that is the promise of Gaia, that's the Rensselaarville State Forest and the Hyte Preserve. In terms of nature or basis of designation, it's a local nature preserve and state forest. Is the project site located within a designated river corridor under the Wild Scenic and Recreational Rivers Program? No. And the applicants have signed and verified this application. They also provided an EAF mapper survey summary report with some of this information that we just talked about. And that verifies some of like the species information. Any questions from the group on the seeker?
Yeah.
I don't think school district is accurate, but.
Yeah.
I think it's.
Okay, so. Yeah, we could just verify that with Tim, let me just find it.
I would think the little bit of Green, I mean, one better. I think Littlebit stops over there. Yeah. Come down the hills, Hunter's Land, Harborville, all that. You get to the top and it's, they won't.
Yeah.
That's right.
Yeah. It could be blue, it could be green.
So. Are we allowed to contingently approve this with the update?
Well, I think first we need to classify this as an unlisted action, because it doesn't fit type 1 category, it's not on the type 2 list, so it defaults to unlisted naturally.
Okay.
So I think that should be the next motion the board would accept.
Okay, so at this time, I'll accept a motion that the action be classified as unlisted.
Right, motion.
Motion by Brad.
Second.
Second by Laura. Is there any other criteria that you want to share for that, or?
No, not for classification. And then the board should do a motion to.
Lead agency.
Yeah, exactly.
I'll now accept a motion that the Town of Rensselaarville Planning Board be designated as lead agency. On.
The motion?
Motion by Dominic.
Second.
Second by Carol, all in favor. opposed, none, motion carried.
So I think now we could hold off on the determination of significance until the next meeting while we rectify school district issue, not that that really impacts the environmental analysis, I think it's worth it for clarity's sake. So the board can move on reviewing applications and that we would just complete seeker at the next meeting.
Okay. So do you want to copy this back, or?
We have it, I can have it to Tim.
Okay, so it's section C4, question A. And then could you just initial where I made the update to the zoning? So that's the last part, that's what we need, and then at our next meeting, which is on August 17, if you could just submit the updated documentation and we will be able to finalize this and schedule the public hearing.
So we're not giving a public hearing for the next meeting?
I think we can schedule it.
We, okay, we can, so.
And this 17th is a Sunday, so I think it's.
The 21st, sorry.
21st.
Yeah, 21st. Sorry, so we just won't do the determination of significance.
Yeah, we'll do that before we close the public hearing.
Okay. And are we still able to refer this to Albany County?
Yes, but I don't think it needs to be, it's not within 500 feet.
Yeah, if it's on Pond Hill Road, it's not on the county roads, we're good.
Yeah.
Okay, so I will accept a motion to schedule a public hearing for American Tower Special Use Permit on August 21 at 7:00 PM.
Right, motion.
Motion by Brad. Second by Carol, all in favor. Opposed, none, motion carried. So yeah, that's all we need is just that updated and Tim should be able to help you.
Get all that figured out.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Bear with me one moment, I just want to put my paperwork back together before I. Are you for Lenuzi? So I believe that we are just looking for some updates on the driveway permit and any other necessary materials that you can provide.
Yeah, so I actually think I'm one short, I think I brought 780. But we will package on the front, so the driveway apron has been installed. Wasn't installed in the exact location, it was shown on our prior plan, which was discussed with the highway superintendent. The first sheet in this package is an email from the highway superintendent, who says everything looks fine. And then he's attached to that, we have a couple of photos. You guys need some AC in here, by the way.
I know. Can you just show me on the map where it is, I've been away for a little while.
So.
I am familiar with it.
Yeah, so the board, and I'm kind of getting up to speed, although it's cool that you guys have YouTube videos of your meetings, so I've watched a couple of them. So we had originally showed, the board asked for a driveway apron, we had originally showed, so here are the two houses that have it. Right, the board, on our prior drawing, we had showed it here, and the board said they wanted it installed before approval, it got installed here. And that was based on the par, because that was reviewed with the highway superintendent and he's fine. And my understanding is that was pretty much the item, right?
Yep. Any questions from the board on the location, it's just the left a little.
No.
No.
Jason's fine with it.
I mean, to the right.
The thing where, did you install a second driveway to?
That's the apron's in, yeah.
Okay.
We decided, the apron would show good faith that the driveway would get put in and where would it?
Yes, they were.
Yeah, because I watched the video, too, the last one.
I wish other planning boards could.
Oh, thank you.
Thank you.
Never even get that.
Other planning boards are conditioning.
Other planning boards are conditioning.
Yeah. Okay, and do you have some updated mapping for us? I can sign those after.
I was optimistic, I brought my lawyers and some paper copies, if you guys are ready to sign.
Well, I can do it after the meeting if that works for you, or you can leave it here if that also works.
Either way.
Okay.
How long think your meeting will be, I'll wait, I mean, it's an hour, I'll say.
No, it won't be an hour, we just have two more agenda items to cover, okay.
I'll leave it here, and I'll be back in.
All right, sounds good. Well, but before you leave, I, just to wrap it up. For the board, I just want to do a motion to approve the final documents, so I will now accept a motion to approve the final supporting documentation for the driveway for the Lenuzie subdivision. Motion by Dominic.
Second.
Second by Dorothea. All in favor.
Aye.
Opposed, none, motion carried.
Thank you very much, I'll be back in a few minutes.
So next up, we have some, well, one administrative item on August 7th, which is our next meeting, that's going to be canceled. Just due to lack of quorum. So, Andrew is getting married.
Woo!
Congratulations. Oh!
It's out of the country, so, it travels. You know, faith, don't want to put too much on the public record, the phase of our idea.
I thought it was telling books online, ladies.
So I'll accept a motion to cancel the August 7th Town of Rensselaarville Planning Board meeting. Motion by Rob, second by Carol, all in favor.
Aye.
Opposed, none, motion carried. All right, and so that means for folks watching, if anyone is, our next planning board meeting is August 21st at 7:00 PM. Our last item for discussion is to continue discussion, which I will have to just kind of listen to, I don't know too much about it, on the small-scale solar array setbacks. So, I believe you guys had been discussing some setbacks regarding small-scale solar.
And just to close the loop on that, Travis's last meeting, we discussed going from 50 that was proposed up to that 100, and he did his recommend, called the planning board's recommendation to that effect, and we submitted that. So that part of it is done, as I understand it, but I know there was some.
Have we heard that?
No, I don't think it's officially before the town board yet, but it will be at some point.
Hasn't yet.
Right, so we're being proactive. And I think the last part of that was the planning board wanted to continue the thoughts about how solar and historic preservation law kind of butt heads. It's obviously not an easy fix, but.
I just don't think that sort of law should apply. It's something solar related.
Yeah.
And it should supersede the historical review, that should be it.
And defer to site plan review, since it will be required anyway, and keeping with the nature of the, historic nature of the location is considered in the site plan review, would it? If the board agrees, it would be something along the lines of exempting small-scale solar in the historic district from compliance with the historic preservation law, but not special use permit requirements. And again, this board can't make that decision, they can just make recommendations for the town board to take it up at some point.
Try to tighten it up a little bit if they can.
It just makes it really hard, because it's never been fit, the historical review.
Right, right.
So I think we can submit some correspondence to the town board, probably when it considers adding that setback to this effect, just advising them that there have been perceived conflicts between the two laws to make application almost impossible, and recommend that one be exempted in some way.
And that was obviously just our conversation, if you guys have anything, that one here.
Because we also thought that shot a hundred feet and being on the roof, you know, I'm saying, okay, an historic building, it can't be on the roof, but it can be on the ground or the shed, it kind of goes hand in hand a little bit, it's a hundred feet, so maybe they don't even have the hundred feet to do that. So, that's how we kind of got, you know, back to where we are now, talking about it.
So it kind of mitigates any concern of on the ground solar.
They have a cross the way.
Yeah, I think we, forgetting what the recommendation was, I think we removed it in 2015, but I think we said that it should not be permitted as a right in the hamlet and.
For ground solar.
Right.
Okay, I agree with that. Yeah, because that was, I think that was some of our concerns, because the prior solar application back in December was the alternative, which would be more at worst. Okay, so that would kind of protect the hamlet.
According to Tim, unless I was mistaken, misunderstood, roofs don't fall under historic review at this point?
They went over that with the standing seam and then the roots, and then how, when roofs get done, he just gives the building, there's really no review on it.
Of the material.
Correct, which makes it harder with the solar on it as well, because if you're not
Yeah, it's.
Kind of following that trend.
Asphalt shingles sometimes, depending on what they do.
Right.
Unless I misunderstood him, but that's.
No, that's exactly how I interpreted it, that there was no historic review on roof material. So.
Then naturally it would follow the solar roof, maybe if you looked at it with a different lens, it would be.
But I don't know, that was how I interpreted it.
So Andrew, does the preparation of kind of that material, when it's due, fall under your.
Yeah.
Office, okay. Thank you. Any other comments or thoughts on solar at this point? Well, with that being said, I will now accept a motion to adjourn the meeting, all in favor. I'll, I'll accept the motion.
I make a motion.
Motion by Laura, second by Dorothea, all in favor.
Aye.
Great, thanks everyone.
Thank you.
A little rusty.